Welcome to the regular scheduled Mayor Council meeting for the town of Berlin. It is actually Tuesday, May 27th, 2025. We're here on Tuesday because of the Memorial Day holiday yesterday. So please join us in a moment of silence following the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from the regular session of day 12, 2025. Good evening, everyone. I did have two corrections that I have already discussed with the email, but if you turn to page three of council pack at page three of 21 in the minutes, it's number three under public hearing. If you go down to Councilor Horace, ask Ms. Saleh what one said equated to FY26, as he recalled it, equating 55,000. That should be for FY25, but it reads FY26. And then number four down at the bottom, on the motion of Councilmember, should be Nichols, second was by Councilmember Green.
Hey, it's close.
It's Nicholas, yeah.
I've heard all kinds of things.
And if there's no other changes, I will make a wish to approve.
Thank you. A motion by Councilmember Horace to approve the regular session minutes of day 12, 2025 with the correct.
Okay.
I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. Nichols, all in favor, say aye. All votes, let the record reflect that vote's unanimous with all the councilmembers present. Jimmy, can you go down two notches on the AC?
Yes.
Thank you.
What is that?
Is somebody cold already?
I'm already wrapped in a blanket.
I had to go back to the seat.
Can we get you a second blanket as well? Alright, so agenda item number two, A, is proclamation 2025-09, and that's the proclamation for Pride Month, which begins in June. So proclamation 2025-09, Pride Month of 2025, and I think we have some folks here in attendance, Patty and Stephanie are both here with us. So let me read it, and then we'll come down together and we'll talk. So whereas the town of Berlin supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas all people regardless of age, gender identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings, and whereas the town of Berlin accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes that a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community, and whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the town of Berlin, and whereas while we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice, and whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the town of Berlin's LGBTQIA community, and is an opportunity to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mayor Zach Tindall of the town of Berlin, to hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as our municipality's observance of Pride Month. Be it further resolved that the rainbow flags will be raised. Actually, it says June 1st, but it's going to be May 30th, I believe. Correct, sir?
Yes, because of our guest.
Thank you. Recognizing all LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the town of Berlin a vibrant community in which we live, work, and do. And then it says witness my hand and seal. But come on up here for a moment, if we're going to, and anybody else that would like to come up and join us in the presentation of the proclamation. Come on up, come on. So I'd say now more than ever it's important, but. So this started, this is year three, right? I think this is year three, with a request to hang flags on Town Hall. Since then, we've gained more flag poles and everything, and Jimmy was like, where do we want them? I said, let's keep them right where they are. And it's a prominent place, people see it, and it's worth having right on the front of Town Hall. So I want to thank everybody for making this come to fruition, but if you want to say anything else, I'd really.
No, I just think the town gays say thank you. I would just say that the town has been really, really good to all of us. Yes. Yep.
Thank you. We appreciate the support. Go ahead, continue what you were saying.
I was going to say, Berlin, we've been in Berlin for 12 years now, and this town has welcomed us with open arms, and we've made some of the best friends that we could have made here, and you don't always know if you're going to be accepted where you land, but Berlin has been a wonderful place for us to land, and we just appreciate the town and the people and the neighbors very, very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. So thanks for your, yes. Since we hung the flags on Town Hall for the very first time, I've had so many people stop and say, I moved to Berlin because.
Really?
Yes. And you'd be surprised how many people were like, I feel comfortable visiting Berlin, I feel comfortable moving to Berlin, knowing that I'm part of the community. So it means a lot.
And I think the other thing that I would say, I think there are people who say that, you know, why didn't we get a flag? And it being sort of not inclusive, but I would say that everybody knows someone, whether it's your kid, your family, someone in school, a neighbor, a business owner, business owners, neighbors, you know somebody in our community, and I think that it not only stands just for us, but when my mom comes to town, she sees a flag and she knows that she's welcomed.
And our strategic plan that we just finished up has One Berlin as a core motto throughout, and this couldn't be more true than One Berlin.
Absolutely.
Alright, let's get a picture together, let's do two on each side so I'm not lopsided. How's that? Just watch the cord if you don't mind.
There we go.
If you want to hold on to the proclamation.
Okay, everyone in the back also smile.
Yeah, you're on camera, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And the flags will go up on May 30th, if I'm on, Sarah?
Friday at 9:00 AM.
Friday at 9:00 AM.
Yes, sound good.
Anybody would like to join in?
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, up next is proclamation, so agenda item two B, proclamation 2025-10, and that is for Pollinator Week. Proclamation of the Mayor Council of the town of Berlin recognizing Pollinator Week June 2025. The Mayor Council of the town of Berlin do hereby proclaim June 16th through June 22nd, 2025, as our municipality's observance of National Pollinator Week as an affiliate of Bee City USA. Whereas pollinator species such as thousands of species of bees are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse, and urban and suburban ecosystems, and whereas pollinators play a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational economic development opportunities, and whereas for decades, the town of Berlin has managed town landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways as well as wildlife habitats, and whereas the town of Berlin provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats and environments. And now therefore, I, Mayor Zach Tindall of the town of Berlin, do hereby proclaim June 16th through June 22nd, 2025, as our municipality's observance of National Pollinator Week. And with Berlin as an affiliate of Bee City USA, we urge all citizens to recognize this observance. Thank you.
How you can accept it on behalf of the Bee City?
And we'll talk for a moment too about where, we still have like the pollinators over at Heron Park, right there on the side of the building, and then we have, Jamie, do we still have the beehive over at the spray site? Didn't we have a beehive there for a little while from S U?
Yes.
Is it still there?
I don't think so.
Okay. Maybe it got lost. Do you want to, do you want to add anything?
Sure, sure. So what many people may not know is that we have a, we have fire retention gardens that were installed next to Island Creamery to promote pollinators and to help with a little bit of a flooding issue that we had in the alleyway, and then we hired a local artist to create what's called Pollinator Way next to Island Creamery, where kids can hop, skip, jump, and turn around, find all the ladybugs, and it kind of entertains the kids while they're waiting in line for ice cream.
Or stops my son every time we're walking by or biking by, hop, I gotta go hop.
Right, right. And then also, we're partnering with the Lower Shore Land Trust to offer our Pollinator Tour on June 7th. So if you need more information about that, contact me or the Berlin Horticultural Advisory Committee.
Very nice. Yeah, there we go. Applause.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So up next, we do have a stacked deck of swearing in, so let's see. So we have, let's see. Let's have anybody that's on the Historic District Commission come up first, we're going to do them in blocks. So we'll do HTC first, I have John Holloway, I have Mary Moore, let's see.
I don't see Mary.
Okay, Joe, that was your job. I think Mrs. Moore up on the way through. Alright, let's see. How's everything going, Joe?
Yeah, complaining?
I can't either, nobody listens.
Right, we're all here.
So we'll send Ms. Mary Moore's.
She said, especially when you have to bring your own blanket to Town Hall.
Number two, everybody, some of you have cushions, we're going to start stacking some blankets.
There's your swearing in.
Alright, so let's get this started. John, if you don't mind, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I, John Holloway.
Do swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Serve as a member of the town of Berlin Historic District Commission.
Serve as a member of the town of Berlin Historic District Commission.
In accordance with the Constitution and laws of this state.
In accordance with the Constitution and laws of this state.
Thank you, you got it. Congratulations, John. And I will be, usually after we do several of these, often saying that next week.
Yep.
The initial down at the bottom as well, if I might remember. And then just initial down the bottom right. Thank you, Joe. Congratulations.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Holloway, do you want to wait until the end of that?
Sure.
For everybody, but just don't forget.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Let's see, we'll do Board of Supervisors. Board of Supervisors of Zoning Appeals, BZA. So come on up, I have Joe Moore, Ray Bunting, Bob Palladino, and I also have Tony, and let's see. I don't think I have Tony's. Oh. Well, see, what threw me off was Mary Moore's on Housing Board Review. Okay. Thank you. So Joe, Tony, and Brian Winter. Brian, are you here?
Yep.
Perfect. Come on over here, gentlemen, just watch the cord. So that's Mary's, and this is Joe's. This is what happens when you give me too many papers. I'm just joking. It's not your fault. Joe Moore, Tony Williams, and Brian. Alright, we ready, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Alright, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and then your name.
I, Tony Winter.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Serve as a member of.
Serve as a member of.
The town of Berlin Board of Zoning Appeals.
The town of Berlin Board of Zoning Appeals.
In accordance with the Constitution and laws of this state.
In accordance with the Constitution and laws of this state.
There we are. Gentlemen, congratulations. Let's see. Thank you, Sarah. So sign on the top and then initial on the bottom right. Bottom right, sorry.
I think it's Karen Kay.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Joe. And then don't run away, because we're going to do a group photo at the end.
Okay.
Somebody's going to say, and then, and take it. We can figure that out.
Yeah, if we can figure that part out, we're good.
Thank you, gentlemen. Go ahead and have a seat, and then in just a moment, we will do a group photo. Alright, let's see, up next is the Planning Commission folks, and we have Steve Schreiber, Janelle Goff. I always mess your last name up, please help me.
Dirk Hopper.
Yeah, I'm going to mess that up. So Janelle, Logan Hall, and Dirk Widdison. Just come forward if you don't mind, stand right here, we'll line up. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you. And I may never, I'm sorry. Thank you. Alright, so raise your right hand and repeat after me. We'll do I, and then you insert your name. So I.
I, Dirk Hopper.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
Support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Serve as a member of.
Serve as a member of.
The town of Berlin Planning Commission.
The town of Berlin Planning Commission.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Perfect, congratulations. Logan, Janelle, Steve, and then Dirk. Alright, and sign, and then also initial at the bottom right. Now's our last act, right, Sarah?
Yes.
I don't see any others.
Yes.
First hand.
Right.
Perfect. So then we'll take everybody that was sworn in, if you don't mind coming up, we'll do the, just initial down at the bottom right.
Perfect. Absolutely.
And then let's get to the, that was Mary Moore's. Let's try to get an even amount, and I'll stand in the center. And then Sarah, I think it's Peter. This is good for, we keep wanting to get people to applaud, and this is really nice.
Color formation.
We got the memo.
Okay, everyone smile. Try to get a little brighter. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you all again. And I can't thank you all enough for wanting to serve. I know that the salary really got all of you motivated to do that, and the benefits package is amazing, but we really truly appreciate your service, so thank you so much. Thank you all. That was, it was a good turnout. We helped some of those because of the planning director vacancy, so many of those planning directors today is on board, so now that we have a planning director that's in and up and running, it's nice to have those fills. Alright, so up next is agenda item four, which is the first reading of ordinance 2025-02, and that is the FY26 budget. I am going to go over a little bit of stuff, and Natalie, if I say something incorrect, it'll stop me, but I'm trying to do it. So I do want to say thank you, we have all of our department heads, pretty much all of our department heads in attendance this evening. So first and foremost, the budget process starts with all of you putting in the things that you need for your departments, and when that started, we came in with roughly a half a million dollar deficit in our budget. And with that, all of you worked very diligently through our staff meetings and with the finance director, to get that budget pretty much sound before it hit our desk. So first of all, I do want to give you all a round of applause for thank you. Then Natalie, you and your team, you get the brunt of it, once they put in all the requests and the things that we need. Natalie has the headaches from there, moving the budget forward up to the point that we are today, which is the introductions, so thank you so much for your work at that, and please share it with your team. With that, the $500,000, $500,000 worth of reductions don't come without any payment, right? The departments don't put in a whole lot of frill, and when they have to cut those things, it means something has to be moved to another fiscal year. So with that, know that we, we don't take that lightly here at the Mayor Council. So we appreciate everything you put in, please don't lose, lose any steam or momentum in the work that you're doing, because we have to roll those things back in fiscal year. I think we're still accomplishing quite a bit, but it doesn't go on deaf ears that we have to be able to move those things to another fiscal year. So thank you all for that. I want to thank the council that helped participate in staff meetings, they're a long process before the budget reaches a public portion, you all are integral in that process as well. We kept the real property tax rate unchanged, and that's 0.8275 cents per $100 of assessed value. This is a good thing for everybody in Berlin, especially when we're seeing those increases in our assessed values of property. I also want to note that with that, keeping the property tax rate unchanged, we did gain roughly $350,000 in additional revenue for FY26, or projecting to gain an additional $350,000 in revenue. Revenue line item, we talked about this with the General Fund Budget Work Session, but due to the town's financial strength and the work that we've all done together through the Finance Department with building up our reserves, we are projecting to have some additional income this year of about $285,000 in interest income, which is a good thing, it's equal to a couple cents on the tax rate. With that, we did receive notice from Worcester County that our grant is going to be flat for FY26, so you will see a change from the introduction, or from the Budget Work Session. We had projected that upward, we did have to write that down by, I think, an additional 30, 35, $35,000. So there is that change in our introduced budget. The General Fund has a balanced budget of roughly $17.4 million. Of that, there are some significant capital projects that are taking place in FY26, roughly $2.5 million for the renovation of Town Hall, about $1.16 million for the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods grant, which is a federal highway administration grant, $216,000 or so for permanent Stephen Decatur Park restrooms, hopefully they're going to come to fruition this year, and then $2.8 million for the new public works facility in Heron Park. So when you adjust that out, our, with our major capital projects, it's about a $10.7 million budget for the General Fund. You'll see that we have a contingency of approximately $45,000, which is, which is good, but in the, in the environment that we're dealing with now, with pricing that changes so frequently, $45,000 might not be enough, but it's, it's good to have that there. One of the big projects where I think you could see a variation is potentially the comp plan that we're going to be working on, you could see some fluctuation in that that we'll need to tap this into DC4, but right now, our best guess is in the introduced budget. The electric fund on page 37, we'll see the revenues starting, it's a balanced budget of about $8.8 million, so roughly a 3.96% increase. Water fund starts on page 47, with a balanced budget of about $5.7 million, or an increase of about 5.47%. Sewer fund begins on page 55, with a balanced budget of about $7.2 million, and a roughly 1.7% increase. And then our baby stormwater fund begins on page 66, with a balanced $1 million budget, and that's a reduction of about 16% this year. So taking that all into consideration, if I've done my math correctly, it's about a $40 million package for FY26. So with that, that is our introduced budget, it is available online, it is available in front of all of you. Natalie, have I missed anything?
No, you have not, Mary, missed anything. The only thing I would like to add, that the totals that you have stated, they're correct, but they do include the contribution from reserve, which is a combination whether we fund the fiscal 26 new projects, advancing the funds that been set aside, or we basically carry and re-burge the projects from fiscal 25 that are not completed. The heavy lifter is water resources, they have major projects that have been alone in several years, and our power funds have been almost depleted to the end, we have a little bit of leftover, but most of the biggest projects have been funded by our coach, who's the greatest help, but also we have advanced some monies from capital reserves to continue on, just like you mentioned, that the prices of the projects and the cost of equipment and supplies and operations have been increasing recently and going on forward. So if we take the contribution from reserves budget pretty much unchanged for several years, if we compare from the prior years. For the General Fund, I want to mention the recent project that we're all excited to see, proceeding going forward, is $2.8 million Public Works, but from what I see so far, the cost is potentially going to exceed that amount that we planned, so going to 26 and 27, we probably will have to reevaluate the whole amount, because entirety of the project include the roadway and the utility infrastructure as well, because it's in such raw state. Even though we have $45,000 contingency on the General Fund, I don't think that amount will cover any of it, so we might have to revisit that later.
Thank you, and I want to, once again, somewhat repeat what you just said, there's too much coming from reserves in this fiscal year budget, and that is not a good thing when you're trying to save and make sure that we have the money that we need moving forward. So I want to make sure that everybody's aware that the Finance Director has been sounding an alarm on the fact that there is a pull, significant pull in these funds from contributions from reserves, and with that, it's not sustainable. Sooner or later, that pot of money does dry up, and, and we're sitting here talking about how we're able to see so much more in interest income, it doesn't happen if we continue to draw.
Exactly. The only other change I would like to mention in this introduced version of a budget, there will be some changes before the budget goes for adoption for sewer fund, we have noticed today that will be some changes in personnel staffing. One of the family members will retire, and we will have to retire at the higher level or lower level, we haven't decided, but before we go for adoption, the salaries part in the sewer fund will have some changes. That's the only change I want to mention. I think we've covered all, the only thing I want to say that I have to talk about, the calculation of the overhead, which is basically the utility funds are reimbursed in General Fund for all the work the General Fund performs on behalf of the utility funds. For this fiscal 26, you will not see that contribution to General Fund for the overhead, but you will notice that there is a $30,000 repayment for the due to inter-fund changes. I just had to make a decision to replace that in new OFF, because the fund could not afford those at fiscal 26 level, and unfortunately, we don't have, well fortunately or unfortunately, we don't have reserves for the stormwater setup so far. That's one thing we need to work on forward as well for stormwater fund, is to make sure that it's financially stable and physical.
Thank you. So I know that this is just the first reading and the introduction of the budget, but it is a big part of all the work that we do together, so I do want to open it up before we move forward for any questions or comments from the council.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple. So we have, you had stated, Mayor, that the contingency of 45,000 is not, probably not enough. What? not enough. What is the recommendation for contingency to be?
Well, last year, we were able to deal with a contingency that was roughly half of what we have now. However, we've got some significant projects that are capital projects, and with that, it's very difficult to tell what that swing might be, right? So Natalie talked a little bit about the public works building. We've got a Town Hall renovations. We've got Stephen Decatur Park restrooms. Personally, my, my thing is, and I'll use the restrooms as an example, if it comes in $10,000 more than what we expected, we've been carrying that project for how long?
A long time.
And how old was your granddaughter?
It's about six years.
So, yeah, there you are, 11 years. So if it's $10,000 more, I think my recommendation would be, hey, look, let's, let's try to get this project off the books, and it's a much-needed project. Let's get it done. So it's difficult to say exactly where that number should be, but 45 is, when you've got a, what is it, a $17 million budget and a contingency basically is 45,000?
I mean, that's, that's what I mean. Is it generally like, like, that's capital. What about personnel? I mean, I know we have our own little reserves, but this is contingency. So what would be?
So the budget contingency is pretty much very different from what I think you refer to. I think you refer to the unsigned balance at the end of the year. That's when we close the year and we see what's available to spend. That if all is predicted, budget is a prediction, how are we going to receive the revenues and how we plan to expense those revenues? So the difference is going to contingency. There is no a recommendation of set amount. If you have unpredicted event or catastrophic event, you should have a reserve set aside for that. The contingency is what's available from budgeted amounts. It's not a reality that what exactly is going to happen. So basically, if your revenue is going to come below $100,000 from what you expect to receive, your contingency becomes non-existent. So the recommendation here is, it's not on the budget. The recommendation for 90 days or nine, three months, six months, it's a decision. That's what should be on the financial statements at the end of the year to keep in reserve in case of unpredicted event.
And we have that contingency.
That is not a contingency. That's the unsigned.
And we have that.
We have that set up. But the contingency on the budget is basically closing the budget to balanced budget, meaning as of right now with this draft, you have $45,000 excess in revenues over what we predict to expense.
In the general fund.
In the general.
And excuse me, for the Town Hall, 2.5. Now, FY '23, we had, I don't want to say we kept, we allocated $500,000, and FY '24, we allocated $900,000. So this 2.5 is really an increase of what, 1.4?
Which the council already passed.
Right, no, I'm just.
I'm just clear, the council passed that each one of those increments. So the 900 was originally for, 900, right? Was originally for public works, but then since we floated the bond for public works, we moved that over to Town Hall.
I'm just, I'm just asking that question. And then, since this is the officially the presentation of the budget, I have said it's a solid budget, and I, and I do agree. The only areas that I had some concern were, and it's not, I'm not suggesting we, we really cut anything, but where I had concerns were these anniversary gift cards. My biggest concern was, and this might be just a matter of interpretation, is how the different variant, the different amounts were for staff. And in my opinion, if you're going, if we're going to do anniversary cards, they should be the same amount for everybody. I'm, I'm looking at it as it's the anniversary of your, of your working here and not the longevity of that time. It's, it's like, it's your birth. I can't explain it. It's, it's, the longevity of your, of, of an employment is reflected, in my opinion, somewhat in the pay. So an anniversary gift card is just you've been here another year. However, it is less than $1,000. So what I will probably make an amendment when this is adopted, is to move that to the line that we have already for under administration for employee appreciation, all departments, bringing that 4,500 up to approximately 5,500. And administration can decide the, the best route to use, to use that in terms of employee appreciation.
So just for clarity, each one of those, whenever you see like a description, each one of those is really just there for the council and the, and the mayor and anybody that's looking at the budget through the process? It all goes away after adoption. That's correct?
Um, details can be printed at any time or stated at any time. This is for us to reference, but to interject with the discussion. So the anniversary gift cards are in retention because they are considered a payroll item. They are taxed at the level of each employee when the card is received, whether it's $10, $5, or $20. The reason we're keeping that in retention, because it's going through ADP, and the employee will have to pay tax at the end of the year. The appreciation amounts that's set for the each department is to provide basically food and lunch at the holiday and get the network and gather the whole entire employee team together. That is totally different, a little bit different, not totally, but a little bit different.
But the council member, who's his point, but they all, they all go in the same retention line item. It's just broken down for the group to be able to see.
When the purchase order is created, the account is retention. The description is an anniversary card or whatever, but Tyler is not tracking the $40 in the anniversary card, and what's being expensed to that. It's being expensed against the retention line altogether.
So the descriptions don't, they're there for us more than.
Yeah, exactly.
Just for clarity purpose, can I explain the gift card? I missed the meeting. We had asked about it. So they are the same amount every year. The only year you'll see a spike for a person, it's not like a continued, like, you've had five years and then you're getting 20 every year. It's just when you hit a milestone year. So if you hit five years, you're going to get $20 instead of 10, but then on sixth year, you're going back down to 10. So it's just the year that they're hitting like the five or 10-year marks that they're getting a little bit more. And it's just like, hey, you've hit a, a five-year milestone. Here's an extra $10 on that gift card. So they're just $10 gift cards every year, but only on that singular year where they're hitting a milestone does it spike up at one time. So it doesn't continue at that rate, just for clarity.
All right. Thank you all for.
And also, if you do decide to make any changes or recommended changes, this is the time to discuss and agree. So I'll make a note, and I will change it before the adoption. I wouldn't wait for adoption and amend the budget later.
Awesome.
Right. So this is the time.
We made a change.
We made a change.
I'll add that caveat.
My only other suggestion was, in regards to the food line gift cards, I would rather, honestly, I would rather take the $50, I guess, for the, for the gift cards and just put it to the one-time payment for all staff. So putting that 325 to 375. And then that would be, that would essentially eliminate the line, food line, food line gift cards that your one-time payment would go.
Is there, what's the aversion? Because the thing is, is that the reason that it's there is, it's part of the study that we all commissioned from PayPoint HR, and one of the feedback points was, and we're not pulling this stuff from the sky, but some of the stuff that the employees said, hey, look, this would mean a lot to us, and for $10, or in some cases, $20.
Is this the PayPoint study with the salaries? Because this food line gift card's been in here since I.
No, no, not that. I'm saying the anniversary gift card stuff. Like, I'm not, I'm kind of confused. You're saying to move the food line gift card to the one-time payment?
Yeah.
He's saying to help the one-time.
I'm saying up the one-time payment.
But the gift box, it just eliminates the card.
But the card, I mean, it's up to this body, but the card has historically come at what, around Thanksgiving time?
Uh, they both come, right, at Thanksgiving.
At the same time.
And I will say. The employee is the same.
I thought one came at Christmas and one came.
No, and I will say, actually, this year, there might have to be a little bit of a change to the food line gift card as far as taxing purposes, so I feel like it's going to get, it's going to get taxed either way, so maybe putting it in the one-time payment. I don't want to speak for all of our staff. I think it's the first, I've heard it, but I think it's a good idea. It's going to get taxed anyways.
Your opinion from the GNA gift of the employees?
I think people would prefer to see that in the one-time payment. I can't rate the gift card, but yeah, I don't know. I mean, out of this group here, I don't know what you all think, but.
I, I think it's pretty much serving the same purpose.
It is, yeah.
The gift cards are attributed to the food purchase, and we get it from food line for the purpose of Thanksgiving. Thank you. And one-time payment is going around Christmas and holidays, but if you combine it together, the end result, pretty much appreciation of our employee group.
So can I get a consensus from the group to combine, or actually basically up the one-time payment from 325 to 375, and then quote-unquote eliminating the gift card for food line?
I like it. I think some people don't like to shop at that particular grocery store, and I think it's easier. It shows up, yeah. If it's something that the employees coveted, that's, you know, from the grocery store, I just can't imagine it not being well-received, according to their.
I stand corrected. I was thinking anniversary gift cards. I got you now.
So the one-time gift and the food line combined, I agree. Do I feel a little?
I just asked that, so we're all thinking, nobody's saying.
Natalie, can you, can you make that change, please?
Absolutely. Thank you. So our anniversary card, leaving as it is, nothing changes.
Correct. The change, and I'll summarize it, make sure I got it correct, the food line gift card description will go away, and the one-time payment will increase for each person by $50, right up to the amount. Thank you, Councilmember Wors. Anything else?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Uh, no, that was all I had. I'm done.
Anyone else?
I'm done. So.
I want to talk.
So we're here, the contingency, and I know we went from, let's see, six weeks ago, there was no contingency. The contingency is now 45, guessing because of health insurance savings?
It's a, it's a combination of, there were some adjustments to the healthcare, the decrease in the percent that we originally budgeted, but also we have decreased the worst of county grant, the amount went down, so that, also there is an increase of $5,000 for the fire company. There is a different amount allocated from customer service because we have placed, we will be requiring for Tyler, two new modules. We discussed them here in the budget work sessions. One is for the planning department, and one to track the asset and inventory, so that cost you will see in the customer service. Overall, plus the overhead allocation recalculation, it brought to 45 as a net number. So it's, it's a combination of several numbers.
Right. Now, and you stated that, you know, your comfort level's not there, but that amount, with some of the project pricing that's already coming in. At the last meeting, we talked about, because I agree, I don't think that that's enough, the health needs of changing that percentage. I think that can be a consideration if we want to try to boost contingencies some. The, the guys were here last meeting, and they showed that we are far below what the, was it the three-year or the five-year average of the percentage of use of the health claims for the employees. If we feel that contingency needs to be moved up, that's, I believe that's a source that we should consider. Because I, you know, you've kind of already stated that we feel that the contingency is going to be used pretty quickly. If we want more, the health insurance guys pretty much, we're both, we're, I have the right terminology here, we're below the average, and we're below their recommendation. So I think that that's an opportunity for us to recruit some of the savings and put towards contingency.
What was that?
I do not remember.
So my, my recommendation for the healthcare, I have mentioned that at the budget book session, would be to continue with the percent that we've budgeted for fiscal '25, continue with fiscal '26. If at the end of fiscal '26, we're closing the healthcare claims on the same average, we're in the same, close to the percent that we are, setting aside the healthcare reserve additional funds to offset potentially future increase of premiums or additional usage of health claims. Lowering down and not having anything set for healthcare, especially putting us in a very challenging situation, what if we have an increase in health claims? That potentially going to require additional funds to cover, I don't want to say not as a penalty, but to offset why we went so low and not having the funds set up for that.
Right. I think that reserves very helping, though.
I also just want to point out, we made a, we did make, if you look at health claims lines for all the departments, there is a decrease because how one digital has presented it each year. They have the first half of the HRA and the second half of the HRA, and they use a lower percentage for the second half because the likelihood of people hitting that second half of utilization is not as high as hitting the first half. So we did make a slight adjustment for that this year that we've never done before. So we've always just had our total amount at the 55% utilization. This year, we did bring that second half down a little bit. So you'll see, I mean, I'm just happening to be on administration, it's an decrease of 19%. So there already is, just for clarity, we did not come down on the first half from 55%, but on the second half, we did bring it down. So you'll see in all of the departments, decrease in health claims. I just want to point that out. So there is some of that already.
And if we had.
Very, very.
Yes, yes.
And if we had a point where we're like in need, right, like say we've worked through that contingency, we could always do a review evaluation or something like that.
I'm just trying to help with the contingencies.
Yeah, I agree.
So then my other question just was, county's going to lower the income tax rate. Do we have, and I understand if it's a $2 million hit for the county, because it takes effect at the beginning of the year, do we have, it's a pass-through rate, so the county's rate is 2.25%, it's going to go down to 2%. So that affects obviously rural property and rural residents, correct? So I'm not, certainly not suggesting to lower that revenue projection.
Well, but potentially that's going to be a wave that comes outward.
Right. So yeah, the big, I guess the bigger impact would be the first full year. It's going to impact the county $2 million next year, then $5 million the next fiscal year. So I know that's a concern. That shouldn't be a concern.
It is a concern of mine, too. I'm, I'm leaving this revenue projection as a, hoping for the best, that we will have one year offset because people file later on normal terms.
Exactly.
So for fiscal '26, '27, I probably wouldn't have to reevaluate this line item.
Anything else from the bottom?
Yeah, I'll just say, I'm certainly proud of what we accomplished in this budget. I had the privilege of attending the department head meetings, and they were very conservative, conservative, conservative in their asks, and yet we're still able to fund a lot of equipment and projects in this budget. Natalie gave us sound advice when she recommended we do small incremental increases to the tax rate. That is great financial advice.
It's still needed to be implemented.
I know. Unfortunately, this year, I felt it was important we hold the line on the tax rate due to the fact that the assessments are going up, and people are going to get hit harder. But all in all, very good budget, a lot of good work put into it, so thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you.
But just remember, next year, Natalie, we'll be beating that drum again.
Yeah, of course.
It is not per se I'm beating the drum. It's perception of that we're going to the same routine that we go from year after year after year. We've gone on year three without the incremental increase. At, every three years, the property's reassessed. When the new reassessment going to hit, it's going to be higher, and for you to say, now we're going to do an incremental in tax, plus the assessed value is going to go up, it's going to get harder. The more we wait, it's going to get harder.
We have to bring balance.
And the general fund revenue is unchanged. We don't have new forms of revenue that we can bring in to fund the ongoing projects.
Right. So I totally understand, but our job is really, I look at it, is balancing that with what we're hearing from people out in the streets, and that it's, people are struggling, families are struggling, and you all know it, and I hear it every day. And, you know, the treasurer's office down at county called them, because the constituent called me, asking, I can't pay my tax bill. What do I, what should I do? I said, well, you have to call the county treasurer's office. She called the county treasurer's office, and they said, we're working out individual plans with everybody. Not everybody, but a lot of people because they can't make it. So that's the, you're the expert in the finance world. We have to balance that with what we're hearing from people, that families are struggling.
I always said, and I've mentioned this to Mayor, I know you're thinking with your heart and we're thinking with the head, but we have to look at the cost of equipment, the cost, how much we have to spend to pave the road, how much the trash pickup costs, how much the trash truck costs, and providing that services at the level that we're always being, that's what our goal is. And even better, we need to improve the services, but that unfortunately requires funding.
The other side of it is too, I mean, when we have the staff asks coming in at a half million dollars more. So the next year, I think everybody needs to understand that there's got to be some movement.
Let's see what the surplus is. You know, we'll push back on that.
I see, but even if it's marginal, that takes us from our eighty-two, whatever the annoying rate is, to eighty-three, you know what I mean? Like, even if it's just that, I mean, we're talking a fraction of a penny there. There has to be some form of movement, because we can only defer for so long, right? And we can only pull from capital and reserves for so long. We worked very hard to get that where it needs to be. I don't have a crystal ball, but if this year and last year is any inclination as to where we probably will end up in FY twenty-seven, which is why I'm so eager to want to make sure that we have the levers to pull, so that we don't have to have a huge increase in a year. If healthcare comes on, our costs are still up, we're not going to have a choice unless we have some stuff off to the side. And I really think that we have a pathway for getting it done, but we've got to be smart about it.
And as the decision-makers up here, we do value Natalie's financial guidance.
So this might be a silly question, I know I dipped it in the well again, but, so I was also with Mayor and Councilor in the department head discussions. When you have, Mayor, when you say that there was an initial five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit, and we got it to the point where it was workable, or we did, you all got it to the point where it was workable and we could have a starting point, the things that aren't being included, I'm going to hope are not mission-critical.
They, those things, I would say some of them probably are critical, but it's just a matter of when, right? Are we, are we in jeopardy of the wheels falling off the track? No. Are we in jeopardy of Tim not being able to get to the things that he needs to be able to make for the lights? No. But is it stuff that you can defer for multiple years? No, it's not. You know what I mean? Like, there's some real substance there that needs to be chiseled away, but if we didn't think that it could make it another fiscal year, it would be here, and you wouldn't have a tax rate that's flat.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
But Natalie fielded a lot of that at her level before it even came to us, because she knew, keeping in mind what Councilmember Green and Councilmember Mayor said about the cost of living, she knew that that wasn't achievable, right? Like, she's not just here saying, we got to move, we got to move to cover the cost. She's cognizant of the fact that half a million dollars isn't going to fly. So she's got to be able to work with those department heads and say, all right, well, maybe your need is this this year, well, sorry, you got to do without this for a little bit, some other department. But it's a lot of work.
Yeah. But despite, despite the deficit.
We don't have any money.
Despite the flat tax rate, I want to say thank you to these department heads, because regardless of the situation, you always find a way to get the work done. Our streets are clean, our lights are on, our public is protected, and it's all because of your leadership and your zeal in doing a great job for the citizens of the town of Berlin. And I just want to say thank you all.
Councilmember Nichols, anything?
Yes, I was in office these days. I think that you.
And then I'm going to swear a bit more.
Oh, yes, I'll be quick, because Mrs. Moore is here. Mr. Burrell sent comments definitely, ring true. We do this every year. We sit here and listen and make the thing, make the decisions and whatnot, but the hard work doesn't come from us. It comes from you all. Of course, you guys take the brunt of it all, but breaking down and making sure that this town doesn't skip a beat. There are still many municipalities who reach out regularly and say, oh, how do you all do it? How do you make it, how do you make these things happen? It doesn't, it's not easy. It's not easy doing the job that you all do, but we truly appreciate that, even though we've not made any major changes in the tax rate in a minute, I mean, in a couple of years, you know, but I'm just nervous about what the next few years go look like. I say that to all the constituents of the town of Berlin, knowing that it may not be pretty, what we're going to see in the next few years, but at the same time, in order for us here in this town to continue to do the things that provide the services that we do without skipping a beat and still looking as beautiful as Berlin does on and in every aspect of this town, it's time for some heavy lifting and some hard conversations. I mean, not just talking about it, but it's almost time to do some things, so let's celebrate today and we'll talk tomorrow.
But our future's not bleak.
I'm not saying it's bleak. Listen, I'm not trying to scare you. It's just trying to prepare you, in the words of third-grade teachers, that's what we say every day, but that's the reality of it all.
The nice part is, some places actually pass a budget for multiple years. Thankfully, we're not doing that, right? What we are capable of seeing far enough ahead that, I mean, we've been fortunate. I mean, you look at healthcare costs, all that stuff, we've been very, very fortunate. But we also have to plan for it to not be fortunate, and we have. I think we're good, don't you, Natalie? I think we're in a good spot, but we also have to make some smart plays over the next twelve months.
Can I say one thing, just for clarity? So the food line gift cards coming into the one-time payments, I know you said, take them from three twenty-five to three seventy-five, but I want to make it clear, that was a three-hundred-dollar payment, the twenty-five is taxes. I don't want employees to hear three seventy-five and think they're getting three seventy-five. I have to beef it up for the taxes, so it will be a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar payment. I just want to make sure that's clear, the twenty-five would go towards covering those taxes for those, for the town portion. So just want to make sure, so it comes out at an even three fifty.
And that you're still okay with the recommendation?
Yes, yeah, I just want to make sure it was clear, because people, if they hear three seventy-five, they get a three fifty check, they're going to be like, what happened to my twenty-five dollars? Just on the record.
So that'll eliminate the process, maybe this be, that. All right, thank you. So that'll conclude Agenda Item Four. We're going to go back to swearing in, now I'm going to swear in Ms. Mary Moore. So if you don't mind joining me up front?
No.
I told Joe, says I would pick you up on the way through.
Well, thank you for understanding. I'll say life happens when you make other links.
Well, make sure that Joe gets formally rated on his Uber services. All right?
I would never duel with my brother-in-law.
Why don't you come on over to this side?
Do you know my brother-in-law, well, don't deal with him, of course. By their ease, I would never go there.
So we're going to swear you in for both of them at the same time, make this efficient. So aye, and then your name, can you raise your hand?
I'm Mary Moore.
Thank you. Do you swear and affirm?
I do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I gladly support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will?
I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently, faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Serve as a member of the town of Berlin?
Serve as a member of the town of Berlin.
Housing Board of Review?
Housing Board of Review.
And Historic District Commission?
And Historic District Commission.
In accordance with the Constitution and laws of this state?
In accordance with the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations.
I'm going to keep it in.
We certainly appreciate your service.
I really enjoyed listening. Let's see, I read what you all do in the paper. I never had the opportunity, a long time, to sit and listen to all the work you all do.
I want to send a picture of your song.
I was.
I love it.
I do want to say one thing, we all still talk about parking so much still. When I was on Planning and zoning, when was Mayor Rex Haley here? I've been here a long time. I remember, yeah, well, I remember coming in front and saying in Planning and zoning that we saw Berlin coming from the very rundown little town in the seventies and saw what we talked about. We weren't Salisbury, we weren't Ocean City, we just saw the historic significance, some of us on Planning and zoning. And so someone said, well, you're the talker, you go in front of the mayor and council, and you talk about what we said. And when I came in front, I said, my biggest concern and our concern is going to be parking in the future, and that we had this issue, I had just been to, the trip was one of the children's school trip, and I saw how they had these big car parks, and they were just wonderfully landscaped, and people parked, the buses would come in and you'd drop, and walk all over the villages. I said, I really think we need to start considering this, and the word from them, well, that was, thank you very much, but I got my letter three days later and said, dear Mrs. Moore, thank you for serving us in this town for fourteen years, but you were only supposed to be on for three, so thank you for your service. And my husband said, Mary, I think you're just seeing something in the future. So I share with, nothing new under the sign, and again, thank you for your dedication. It's a pleasure, thank you again for the honor. I hope I give you all well.
Hopefully you're doing your service.
I'll see you at food line.
And Miss Moore?
My social life.
That is a happy place. And then we'll take a picture.
Don't give me checks or anything.
No, you don't have to give a check.
Taxes is over.
Check, no checks, and we can pay you what we can.
Oh, Lord. Lord said goodbye, not that.
We can pay you with cold air, because we got a lot of that.
You missed the first group that we had in here, we gave all the benefits to, so.
Oh, I heard that. I heard about all the little cards.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I always leave a meeting, give her, her be saying, I'll look at some of the gals, and then I'll just, I say, how big is your check for doing this? Because I have been getting mine in the mail, so I always have to joke.
We did that ice cream that one year, but then we had to chase everybody down just to give them our ice cream, to say thank you, so we were like, all right.
Mine was calories, but I do love their ice cream. It's worth it. I'll let you all get back to work, forgive me for my chatter.
That's part of you.
Oh, yeah. My husband would say, thank you for giving him a little break.
So that's who we need to send a bill to.
He said, and with historic history, I know you proved me out there, he said, Mary, I'm putting this on your tombstone. And I said, what's this? He said, Mary Moore, good ideas for other people. And I'm like, on the other side, put a little English angel, say, God knows what you tried.
Mary would like a picture.
Me, too. Thank you. Beautiful.
Perfect. We enjoyed the rest of your evening.
She does a great job.
She's phenomenal. She is phenomenal. I'll give these to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I did research promotional Snuggies over here, you can get them for about eighty-five dollars a piece, so you can put your logo on it, just so.
Why don't we just run a lap?
Now we'll get you. You can run mine, too.
All right, let's see. So up next, items for approval. We have one this evening, but before we act with that, we will have comments from the public. Agenda Item Five A is motion twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one, the approval of sharing the cost of a traffic study at Heron Park on running point. But you'll remember the contract that we approved with Heron Park selling that to Coastal Ventures Properties, that the town has agreed to split the cost of the traffic study at Heron Park. You'll see on page twelve of the packet, the motion has the cost as well as our portion of that cost, which is fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, predominantly for our stuff with the skate park and public works and parcel four ten, it's not developed yet. So you'll see the scope of the work that begins on page thirteen, and I'll take any questions or comments for the council. Okay, seeing none, we'll open it up to public comment regarding motion twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one. Seeing none, we'll take action by the council?
Motion to approve twenty, motion twenty twenty-five dash thirty.
So a motion by Councilmember Morse, a second by Councilmember Mayor, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? A director would reflect that votes four to one with Vice President Burrell in opposition. Thank you all. The motion passed four to one with one member in opposition. Sorry. Agenda Item Six, discussion regarding business license code and town attorney data gaps is going to run point, page seventeen of the packet.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to, in light of some of the issues that have come up in town the last month or two regarding Baker Street and the traffic and the acts, I just wondered, and Vice President Burrell had outlined some ideas about perhaps regulating businesses here in town. The, our code and our ordinance authorize the council to not only issue business licenses, but to regulate businesses, and I wanted to just get an idea from the council to see if there was an interest in amending the ordinance to include regulations on businesses. And I say that, at least to my knowledge, we've never really had a problem with a business, how a business operated in town, and, you know, maybe that instance was a one-off. So I just wanted to feel to see if the council is interested in me going down that route, try to draft something to regulate businesses in the town of Berlin.
If I could just add one thing, it's important to note that such a regulation would not impact whether or not a business can function in a certain zone. That's part of the zoning code. It's just important to keep that in mind. This isn't about stopping a business from opening as long as it's allowed in a location. It's more dealing with it, if there's a problem, after that.
Yeah, it's not about stopping a business coming to town, it's about if a business, if they're, as I said in the short memo, if they're, you know, if there's trash, noise, illegal parking, perhaps the building that the business is in is not up to code, things like that.
So there is precedent for this. We have it already in like the short-term rental ordinance that we drafted, it has like some teeth in there if somebody's misbehaving, and it has the ability to kind of roll that license back. I think that's kind of what you're asking.
Yes.
Is there an urge to want to go that direction?
That is what I'm asking.
And if so, what points would you want to see?
So a question, Mary, currently the application for business licenses, basic information, name, address, if you're pretty much the rent of the license, as long as it complies with zoning? Pretty much, yes. It is signed off by the Finance Department, the Planning Department, planning checks for zoning and other, whatever, other codes might impact it. Finance checks to make sure that they do not, they are not in debt in town at the moment. They would have to settle that before they can be issued a license. But nothing that pertains to violations or anything? No, because there's really nothing, there's really nothing in the language.
We don't have any, anything in the code regarding violations.
I think we should. I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, I'm thinking, the wheels are going, the hamster's head.
No, I look at it this way, since we haven't, since we haven't had an ordinance which provides regulations, I don't see the need that we have to have this done in the next two weeks.
Right, that's right.
So if you would like, I can, I can draft an ordinance, submit it to the room, see if that, what you all think, what, if you, if you want changes done to it, and just, we could do something that way.
I think, I think that it would kind of, I'm just trying to walk through this, yes, that's a good idea, but I think that it would have to be something that would be worded in more of a, I'm not going to say it right, but in more of like a, like I think Vice President Burrell was saying, more like a nuisance type of.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's why I put down, you know, illegal parking, trash, noise.
Yeah, some of these things are already enforceable by just calling the police.
That is true.
So I think that that would need to be legalized, legalized on your end.
They are enforceable by calling the police or code enforcement, but not to revoke the business license as a result.
So, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think, I don't want to speak for the whole group, but I think that if that's the, where we're going to go, we would probably up here in order to give you guidance, decide if, is revoking a license a thing we want to dip our toe into in terms of enforcement, or, you know what I mean, like, is that, that's the highest it's ever going to be? Do we want to, or even approach that area? So.
What if there's no violation from that?
Right, but what I mean is like, we would have to, or Dave could pull examples, I mean, I think there'd have to be some sort of, yeah, like a trigger point, enforcement points to make that.
And I think in the code.
We don't want to, we're not out to, you know, get everybody, this is just a, okay?
I think in the code, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, off the top of your head, I think that there are areas of the code that permit the council to function in sort of a judicial manner, like to hold a hearing and make a decision about.
Right, right, and there would, you know, whether, whether we could have the planning director or the. And there would, you know, whether, whether we could have the planning director or the town administrator initially suggest a suspension and have an appeal to the mayor and council. We could have something like that.
Yeah, there has to be the appeal process.
Yeah.
I would say yes. I would say yes, proceed with drafting something and, and bring it for our review. I think it's better to have it, not have it, than need it, not have it. And I can recall way back when, the council called a business in because of the number of complaints. It got just complaints in that act. And they had to sit here and explain to us why they should continue to operate in the town of Berlin and what they were going to do to change this behavior. And it worked tremendously well.
It's good to know that happened without the authorities.
Right.
Okay. Dave, do you have what you need?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're good?
Yes.
Perfect. Let's move on to item seven, which is reports, town administrator report department.
I don't have anything in particular, other than I have a note to myself to review my calendars. I have Friday afternoon closings for records stuff. We're, we're almost at a point where we can't really continue to move further until we get some responses from the Maryland State Archives, which seem to be kind of slow in coming. But we're, we're working on it.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Mary regarding her comments or the reports that are in the packet? Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. One thing I will say, since we have everybody here, Memorial Day went very, very well. Thank you to our departments that, one, helped make things look nice. Two, showed up to the president, you, the Memorial Day ceremony on Sunday morning for the parade. Thank you so much for making sure that everything looked nice and that it was good to go. I will say that we had a really great turnout for the Memorial Day ceremony. Blood was good. Next year, Ivy, if you don't mind, can we put it on the rack cart? And then we'll also make an event on Facebook. I did hear that comment from the folks over there. And then, even though it's not a town event, just for clarity, it is not a town event. It is a American Legion's event, but we will post it so that at least people have that central. I checked to see their Facebook, and they haven't posted since 2023. So I think we can help them out a little bit, maybe making sure that the word gets spread in the minutes. With that, I do also want to say that the parade, Memorial Day Parade on Flower Street was phenomenal. We had the entire group there. We did a nice little walk. It wasn't super, super hot. It was nice and cool. It was a nice weekend. With that, yeah, the rain held off, everything, it was great. There was a reckless gentleman on an e-bike that was nearby. He wasn't reckless, but he did get a couple speeding tickets. They'll be in the mail on fourth coming. The, following the Memorial Day parade and the activities at the park, the park was in a, in a state that was in disarray this morning. You agree, Jimmy? And it was definitely not.
Took a little bit of time.
It was definitely not consistent with the town of Berlin's way that we like to run things, right? Like, we like to make sure that at the end of an event, it's clean, it looks good, it's good to go. Henry Park was not in that state this morning.
Well, it wasn't Henry Park. It was, it was the better part of that section of Flower. Because when I left my house and rode by where the judges stand was, I just had to sit there for a second and look on both sides of the street and say, wow.
And normally.
This is not better than we found it.
And our crews do a great job at the end of an event, making sure it looks nice and it gets put back.
And I won't say it's the crews at all, not you guys at all.
Later in the evening, when we have longer congregations of crowds and then trash is left, it's very difficult to then pick that up once the crews have somewhat dissipated. So we do need the public's help. We enjoy the event. It's phenomenal. We love having everybody come together. But at the end of the night, if you have some trash, or if you're out there and you're enjoying the festivities and you have some trash, find the closest can and put it in, please. It does make all the difference in our crews being able to make sure that our neighborhoods are clean and making sure that our parks are, are ready for everybody to enjoy the next day.
So. You have a follow-up on that. So it's curious, new things here. I had a few casual conversations with police officers. I really wasn't aware that the after parade, evening and afternoon became a bit of an issue. Understand that we closed the park at dusk this year, is what the officer told me.
I think it was nine o'clock.
Okay. How was it from your standpoint? I understand the site.
I can't, when I left at five.
What, from the park?
From what I've heard, it was very sparse by the time the park was ready to close. It wasn't anywhere near like last year.
Okay. Now, it's, I agree, it's a lot of news to me, but I heard from some officers. We leave in the afternoon, so I'm just familiar with it.
There was a lot of preparation that went in on the staff's behalf, learning from last year and trying to make sure that we can maybe make things better this year. With that, we get a lot of folks, which is a good thing. We like people coming from all over to enjoy what we have here in Berlin. But, and by and far, the people that live in Berlin are taking care of things very well. But we enjoy people coming to enjoy the festivities, but just clean up after yourself when you get done. That's all we have, to the best you can. Like, we're not saying take the trash out at the end of the night, but just make sure it hits the can would be great.
Our crews would rather see a pile of trash at the bottom of the can.
Or beside it.
Because it indicates that.
If it's people we're trying to throw away. So, I mean, we're, just not where kids are going to play.
Yeah.
Alright. I think that concludes my stuff. Anything from the council?
Just to add to what the mayor said concerning leaving and cleaning up after yourself. I would like to call upon the public to, to respect the property of others. My comment is directly related to parking. That those folks that come to the town of Berlin would be so considerate as to not to block driveways. I think that just shows, shows a respect for one's property. And I do believe that it's not unreasonable, I guess. So, so come here, enjoy the festivities, but, but please respect our citizens' property. And clean up after yourself.
Most definitely. I mean, I think, I will say this, this parade is not new. And my mother sits on my front porch and she says all the time, I know that this is new to many, but this parade is not new. This has gone on literally her entire life and then some. And that chick is seventy-four years old. This, she don't care if she gets you, but she'll tell you.
Dave said she's my age.
Yes, exactly. So this parade, my mother was like, she remembers when her grandfather was one of those folks who made, who brought this parade to Berlin. So having it is not a news thing. It's lasting into the evening is not new. That's happened my entire life. But foolishness is new. I'll say that. You know what I'm saying? Little things happen periodically here and there. And I'm not trying to make a big deal out of whatever could have happened in the past or last year. But what I will say is this, this parade is one of the only ones that happens in the nation. One of the only ones that happens on Memorial Day. And I will say, I hate for those who like to visit and see the parade and be a part of it to come to. It's just like when you have visitors come to your house. And I tell my children all the time, when your cousins are here and they're playing with your stuff, before they go home, make them clean up. Before they go home, if somebody's here and they're hanging out in town with you, or they're here to visit, dude, don't leave that. Don't do that. Because at the end of the day, we still have to live here. We do. When somebody comes and they bring foolishness with them, it's not per se a Memorial Day thing or a town of Berlin thing, or a what happens at Henry Park thing. It's just what comes with, it's a possibility of what could happen when you have large groups of people. Didn't happen this year, doesn't normally happen. That's just happens sometimes. It was a great time, it will always be a great time. Folks, just clean up before you go home, before you go back to Snow Hill Polka Mo, wherever you came from, down the block, Ocean Pines, wherever. If you dropped it, pick it up. If you see it, pick it up. Because I would do that if I were you.
And I think, I, you might know this, but I think it was one of the top four things to do by Maryland tourism for Memorial Day. And the Flower Street Parade was one of the top four.
Yeah, I mean, she says, she talks about it every year. She was like, when I was little, we used to pick up, it was May Day, Hay Day, and all those, whatever else. But she was like, you know, we have our dresses ironed and, you know, you get your hair done and all those things for this parade that happened every single year, you know, all, all parts. So to keep it and to continue to honor it, just, you know.
Also for context, so the Berlin Christmas Parade, there's trash everywhere in downtown Berlin. I think the difference between the Berlin Christmas Parade trash cleanup versus the trash cleanup at Henry Park is that the street sweeper can go down Main Street and clean it all up. So, you know, parades are just messy. You know, you've got kids all over and so I don't want to.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want the Memorial Day parade to be singled out as a, as a messy event because it's just different, it's a different style of cleaning up in the park versus cleaning up downtown. Because let me tell you, the Christmas parade, it's way messier than any event that the town has ever put on. More gets cleaned up because we have a, a big piece of machinery that goes down and back.
Labor intensive to clean the park.
Right, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
I just have one more comment concerning the parade. I do immensely enjoy walking around with my colleagues.
Driving, excuse me.
Driving. With my colleagues. And to have that camaraderie and those discussions, why, oh my goodness, we're going to be caught because that could be a meeting.
We just discussed all the festivities. That's all we discussed. And the news was there. The news was covering it.
We really had a good time.
Are you kidding me?
And I would like to invite some staff to walk along with us before they're coming here. I think that'll be good. Jamie.
It's fun. And we've had Sarah before. And most of the girls have walked with us. Anybody that would like to join, they're always welcome. It's Christmas parade. I know a lot of you are working.
We're all working.
Or anytime that we have things going on, I think it is, it is nice. But yes, if you want to walk or enjoy the parade with us, you're more than welcome. Dean's on his bike. He's got some little pegs that you can ride on the back. And on the front. Remember those as a kid?
Yeah, Carson has the baton on the back.
Yeah, Carson's our official flag carrier. Alright, let's move on to comments from the public. Anybody that would like to address the mayor and council? Seeing done, let's move on to comments from the council, and we'll start with Vice President Burrell.
I don't have a case.
Okay, Councilmember Herr.
Two things. One, and I talked to Jimmy about this the other day. Gillen family is asking for an update on their plaque for the flag poles they donated at Stephen Kater Park. And you mentioned you were having trouble getting a base. Any further on that? Do they really want to see this happen?
We are still waiting back from the local contact that we had for the base. So we will reach out and make some more contact and maybe put a little pressure on and get it done.
Letting them know the face has been a little antsy.
We're waiting on someone else, and that's our unfortunate.
Maybe what we can do, I think on the parks, right, we have on the website, maybe get a picture, update a picture of the flag poles and let's put on there that donated by while we're waiting in the interim. So that way we can at least recognize publicly, but then also know that we're working on that. But still, I think that we have that on the facing.
We have the plaque.
We have the plaque. Picture the plaque.
That's perfect, yeah. Alright. Just find some, some way to get it out.
Alright, item number two. I'd like to engage the mayor and council in a discussion about the fire department contracts. As you know, we've been doing these contracts for a year. And I think in individual discussions, we kind of all agree, they really serve a purpose. And as of late, the fire company has indicated that it's the town that wanted them, that they never really cared for them. So I'd like to see if we could engage in a discussion about possibly eliminating fire contracts. Are they really necessary? Start there.
I will add to the point of whether it's the town that wanted them or the fire company. I think that the, I think, this is my memory. The town originally had to enter into a contract with the fire company because of the relationship we had tried, we had established as an employer in order for the fire company to participate in Maryland State Retirement. I think once that relationship changed because of the state retirement's notification of regulations, the contract just continued from there. But I think that the original purpose, they're not incorrect in saying that it was a town.
I actually think.
I may be wrong, but feel free.
I think you are. My recollection is that the contract resulted from that study that we had done.
The Matrix.
Remember that study? When we started, yeah, that's when we started doing the contract.
And I talked to Jay as well on this, and just for the, my two cents. I agree that there's a lot in here that is not needed. However, the one thing I would like to see us doing, it can be short and sweet, and Jay and I have talked about this as well. I want to make sure that whatever we give is all we can give in a fiscal year. And that we are giving that with the understanding that service will be provided for 12 months, right? We're not compensating fully for service. We are giving what we can and hoping that the fire company is going to honor that agreement for 12 months. We know that this really doesn't have a lot of teeth, but something in there, even if it's just the disagreement section and then the first three whereas, that say, hey, look, here's the money, but we want service for 12 months.
Just a simple one-page document.
It could be, yeah.
Eliminate all the.
You can both on the same page.
Actually, this, this year's contract is essentially done except for the numbers. Their numbers are a little different than our numbers.
I think it's important not for, for everyone listening to not, to not kind of confuse the, the funding and the document. So the funding, I mean, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, legal people, but the, the whatever's in the budget, wherever it's allocated is where it's going to go, because that's the document, that's what we pass.
And just for the hallway.
The supplemental.
Page eight of the, of the introduced budget has EMS operating allocation, fire operating allocation, fire and EMS capital allocation. It's there. So just so the people know.
And I have a question. Anyway, so I just want to make sure that, that what Councilmember Herr, as I understand, is bringing up is when we, when it's said that we have eliminated the contract, we're not eliminating funding.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Correct.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that that's clear, that that's not what we're talking, we're not talking about eliminating funding. It's, it's the paperwork part of it.
We would continue to, they would continue to provide service, but we would eliminate all this unnecessary.
Eight pages of floor.
But, 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 um, some of those issues came about. Came about when, when there was discussions concerning dates of when we're going to be, when, when expenditures were going to be paid and things of this nature. And I think we tried to put those things in. And, and I think we tried to put those things in some type written documents so everyone would have the same expectation. But if they're no longer needed, uh, I would say, uh, less is just to do with that contract.
Well, should we, should we talk to the fire company before we take that decision?
Well, again, it was to engage the council in discussion, get their thoughts on whether it's really necessary or not.
I like the less of war approach. A simple, simple contract. Um, do we have contracts with our consultants that work for the town, booth, EA?
Yes, but we do not have a contract with Wilson Youth and Family. Is that correct?
We do, we do have a contract.
We do have a Wilson. I didn't think we did.
Yeah. So I just say, I mean, simplifying it, you know, I understand how to pick the dates and then it, um, it's a lot, you know, honestly, I don't know how, um, you know, when it comes through, there's revisions and the redaction version, I mean, I didn't just blurt it over, I have to admit. Um, and I just, um, the intent is to provide fire EMS protection services to the town of Berlin at the level that we can provide to, to help fund the service that's provided. So I think we can boil it down to a one sheet.
And it's frustrating when we get called out for missing a meeting on a particular date stating we're violating the contract.
And we'll still meet this, and just for clarity, we'll still meet in September, uh, the fifth Monday in September, still meet the fifth Monday in March with the fire company. We're not saying we're not doing that. It's just that there's a lot in here that can be condensed.
Would we still be doing the, what used to be quarterly or whatever they call it, work sessions?
No, the order needs to be revised, September and March.
Okay. Right. How they come up here at any time?
September and March.
There really is a whole lot more than what you're talking about in the contract right now.
That's what I'm saying, but it's, it's eight pages.
No, the, the, uh, contract with the fire company is three pages and the EMS is four pages. You're correct.
So seven.
And so does it, but there's not a lot of, there's not a lot to take out.
There's a lot of language that, that speaks to what they would like to work toward, what all of us would like to work toward, but those aren't really contract terms.
Yeah, and quite frankly, I mean, let's go to, let's go to fire. I mean, I don't, I've worked through our budget a lot, so I don't see 150 grand available for capital expenses. Do you all? Maybe I missed a line or some money? I don't, I don't see it. I mean, I've been more asking staff to cut $500,000 out of requests and, I mean, not, I mean, we're fully funding their fire request, but I don't see an extra 150 grand laying around for capital. Everybody got quiet quick.
Well, I'm not being the silly that we did.
So the suggestion then is to just take all of that into one pick for each side, the EMS and the fire. So one page, this is, this is the funding, this is what we.
Fire company continues to provide service to the town of Berlin for the period of one year. In turn, the town of Berlin will allocate $100,000 for the budget.
Double sided.
So just to muddy the waters a little bit, a lot of work's been done on the contract already. We let it go for one more year with a plan to not do it. Remember, just for honesty, I have a real position.
This has a good sign.
Right.
Yeah, but for, for the, for the, uh, fire company contract is, as I said, is three pages right now. The only thing that needs to be changed is David put in, it's good for the period of July 1st, 2024 to June 2025, so he's got to change that. And essentially take out section two, paragraph two, which is an annual payment of 150,000 for capital expenses. And save that out of the contract stuff.
Will you eliminate?
For fire.
For fire. Eliminate the paragraphs three, four, probably five. Yeah. The bulk of it.
I guess it feels like a contract, maybe it shouldn't be around, you know what I'm saying? But I mean, it's not the topic of buying fire and EMS service, but just the, the nuts and bolts of it.
It just works.
It's just kind of like, it's exhausting. So I guess it's.
No, I, I understand the exhaustion part of it.
I mean, my only, my only questions are really is the, what I meant, what I meant was the meetings that we sit over there.
Yeah.
So.
Twice a year.
All right. So, um.
But they'll still come and do their presentation.
Honestly, I'm okay if they don't. Send it to us electronically, do it, but, you know, I mean, I can read the slides.
No, I don't. I, I, I hear you.
I don't even see their paperwork at all, so.
So I just think a front and back would be nice. One, if you guys wanted to cut that, two sides would be nice. But I think that there needs to be something, because remember, friends, this entity will not, even as much as I love you guys, we will not sit together as a group forever. I'm not saying that the fire company will change their thoughts and views as their heads of office change, but I think there needs to be something that stays in the record as to whatever is whatever, you know what I'm saying? Like some hard copy of something. And then if you want to minimize this annual agreement, then you do that. But there needs to be like maybe a.
Simplified document.
Something, or, or, you know what I'm saying? I mean, yes, simplified for sure, but something that, that gives these future bodies, this future mayor and council, that future fire leadership, okay, how did we get in this place? Why are we there? Something that they can have rather than somebody sitting in the rocket chair whispering in their ear how things came to be, that kind of thing, you know what I'm saying? That way they're not rebuilding the parade or whatever it is when, when they're, when this new entity and that new entity comes together.
All right, do we want to discuss the terms or do we want to wait and do that at the meeting overnight? I think that's when we plan to do that.
I'm assuming that's the intent because they were dated June 9th. I don't remember it being specifically discussed.
Obviously, my memory's not to be trusted.
Okay, Mary. Everybody gets it back.
I think like Mary said, a lot of the paragraphs in here are aspirational. They're not really contractual terms. It's just that, you know, we're going to try to be transparent and meet with each other.
Well, let's call it a mission statement and we'll make, we'll create a mission statement that will be the cover to whatever this one-page contract will be in the future.
I, I, please, please don't take this the wrong way, but at this point, since these are almost done and they're not that long to begin with, I think we're making it more complicated by trying to shorten it up.
Then the 11,000 at least.
For future, not today.
But I do think that it should be communicated that our budget has been introduced.
Yeah.
And the numbers are what the numbers are.
Well, yeah, we get, obviously, we need to amend this with our numbers.
Yes. Well, the 205 can stay, but, um, page two of the fire agreement, the mayor council agrees that this person annual payment of 150,000 dollars in full for capital expenses prior to July 10th, 2025, not going to happen. We can't. We don't have the money.
Dave, just to insert, is a contract is a binding agreement between the two parties to perform the services. So if you don't have a contract, you basically don't have to abide the rules.
Well, that, that, that's true and not true. I mean, if we're giving them money, they, they have to show up and put out the fires.
But if it's not in writing?
It, it wasn't in writing for 50 years?
And I think that's why it was established as a contractual, just to have.
And I believe that they have obligations to the agency.
Well, of course, but I'm thinking from perspective, our contracts with the engineer and professional services, we have it in writing and that's between the two parties to ensure that they provide, yeah, they provide the services, we receive the services.
I don't disagree with you there. I think the biggest, maybe I'm reading this wrong, is the biggest problem, the meetings?
No, because they're set. I think the biggest problem with the meetings was the behavior when we asked to move it a couple days. I think that was the biggest.
We're cutting the meetings out.
Flexibility.
We cut the meetings in half.
I think the meetings are fine. I'm okay with that. Is everybody else? We're going to meet twice, September and March. They're already agreed on, I think that that's, to, to not do that would be a step in the wrong direction in my opinion. But we've also let them know that we may need flexibility on those, but we're going to do everything we can to accommodate.
I mean, Dave, we have consensus out here to simplify this thing.
How, how do you want me to do it? What, what gets cut out?
Again, as Steve stated, I think we keep it as it is and we'll talk. We're, we're discussing simplification for future. It's out in the universe for next, for the next fiscal year, whatever you want to call this contract.
Jay, I've got no problem doing what everybody wants to do. I just don't know what to cut out and what's, what's, you know, what's fluff and what's not. Cause I, I, I don't see a problem with keeping, keeping aspirational things in there. Like we're going to try to work together. What's, what's complicated about that?
Because it's meaningless. And then they throw it in our face. And I think your suggestion would you start off by saying, well, let's, let's get that in the room and mask that. And all indication is they don't care. They don't need this.
Well, I mean, if neither side wants to have a written agreement, I guess that's between the two.
I'm not hearing that though. I'm not hearing.
I heard it.
I know, but I'm not thinking that there's like broad consensus right this moment to reduce it the way that we talked about, which I, I can agree can be simplified, but maybe we do that as a FY27 thing and the first item on our agenda for September of 2025 when we sit down together is, hey, how do we make this thing cleaner?
I'd, I'd be more with that.
Because I mean, I can tell you what their agenda is going to be, they've done the same for every meeting.
I mean, really, because like I said, we're at the point right now where as long as we switch out the numbers, it's done.
What would happen if those don't get approved by us?
Or by them?
Or by them.
Well, I don't know. I don't think nothing will occur. I, I don't really want to see what.
And then my other, my other thing, and my other thing is, um, I don't know, I don't know why or whatever, but we just got those today at budget introduction.
Oh, what happened? I, I, actually, I can tell you on April 22nd, I sent an email to Joe Moore telling him what changes we wanted. And Joe was on vacation, I think, when that happened. And he sent me an email today, which I did not conclude, um, saying that it just got, my email got by and he didn't, he didn't make the changes until like yesterday, I guess, or today. And that's why the delay is sending it out.
It does, it does. Um, I'm, okay.
So the path going forward is we put it in the books for the.
September, well, the September meeting, um, we're not really sitting down formally.
The moment.
Correct.
So I think that that would be the best time.
Yeah, the way this works is a work session on the fifth Monday in September, 2025 and March 2026.
Do we have any sense that the fire company intend to be present on June 9th?
I don't know the answer to that. Can you ask at that point to be here for the, we're going to have them on the agenda for action minus the date changes that need to be done and the removal of capital and the correct numbers.
Yeah, I have more update the motion from last year, but all it says is approving the contract. It doesn't get a motion. Doesn't get a good details.
Okay. So make sure.
I will do that.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Nichols? Or Nicholas, whichever one you want to go by.
I have, I have, phenomenally, Brian, I enjoyed all of the parks, not just myself. I don't want to talk to the microphone. The, um, all the events in the last week or two have been phenomenal. Of course, the starting of the farmer's market season, everyone is enjoying it, love being out and seeing the streets filled of those days as well. Um, coming out for Memorial Day celebrations at the Memorial Gardens and then, which I couldn't come to, cause I'm being sitting with children of the weekends. It's an acquired case, people. That's all I'm saying. Infants after 50 is an acquired case. Um, and then on Monday, this, these are, these are huge things for us here as members of this community and citizens of town Berlin. But as we see, they are also items that people in the neighboring towns and communities look forward to as well. And many of them will stop and say, hey, how do you make that happen? Hey, how do you do that? And I've heard that from a few municipalities, members of their mayor and council or what have you saying, how do you have that? It just, I mean, you know, I'm not going to say it just happens on its own, but it comes from all the hard work of all the bodies that made it happen and the citizens who really and truly participate and love their town. And I am glad to say that I am a member of this town of Berlin, not only this diocese, but this community. So thank you all for making us look great.
Councilmember Wors?
I'm going to ask Councilmember Green to go first.
Okay. Councilmember Green?
Pretty easy because I don't have anything.
Wow. I'm going to go before you, Councilmember Wors. And just say that I'll come back again. I'm going to do a dean, I'm going to get a. So I will say that today, the town Berlin council vote for ESAM. Councilmember Wors, you're running for, uh, what is it again?
District vice president.
District vice president. So hopefully you're successful in that, but we did vote for you.
Thank you, Berlin.
So congratulations and hopefully that works out. Good. Now you're up.
Oh, okay. So, uh, yeah, well, a couple, a couple of things, some more lengthy than others. But I do have a question about, um, swimming, swimming pools. I, I received, uh, some questions and concerns from a resident. Um, I guess, let me start from there. The permit process that we have, do, we have a permit process for pools, correct?
They have to pull out a building permit.
Okay.
And you shouldn't swim in. Yeah, that's for a green.
Right. Important safety too. Um, so in, in, anywhere in that process, is there a point in which I know, um, kind of explanation of proper drainage, like in ground, I assume, um, is held because, uh, reportedly, uh, there's, um, some drains, drainage of pools that are going into like the gutter and into other people's property. So is there any guidance that's provided at all?
I would have to check the code to see if it says anything about that, but I'm not sure.
I believe that, I believe that the code prohibits it.
Prohibits allowing it.
Yeah, but I mean, is there, is there anything that when you, when you, when the, when you're headed the permit, there's like a, the drainage of a pool, proper procedure in the town?
It's just the normal building permit. It's not a special pool permit, so.
It probably happens at the point of construction. So then as years progress, they're not going to get that. But it is probably worth pushing something out about the proper drainage of a pool, given that it is getting that time of year. I have also shared with some department heads when I saw some water running down the street that looked like it was also coming from a pool. Just to try and help educate folks, but I don't think people want to do things that are incorrect, but they might not know.
Right. Sometimes the provider to, or a service provider, you know, a lot of people source their pool.
Yeah, a lot of, and people trust that their contractor is going to do the right thing.
Maybe just an estimation.
Some more education. Um, okay, and then the, I got a message and then I was later tagged on social media about these speeding incident on West. So I was kind of just wondering, um, that intersection there of West and Washington, um, is there anything, with, with the, the parking lot coming up right there, um, I know we're working, well, I, I understand, I believe that we're working on some signage about parking, but is there anything, um, perhaps lieutenant, that we can do about that area, well, all of West really, but this is one, I guess, that's with the construction and with the parking lot. Um, is there a way we can maybe put one of those little, um, speed limit flashy things somewhere there? Or, I mean, something to just kind of friendly reminder, is that, is that a possibility?
I can, Tim can, yeah. Somewhere on there. Somewhere on there. Needs power to. Is there a particular location along West Street there?
Well, it's, it's really all of West Street, but I think.
We can't go to Speedport.
No, no, but I think if you're, I think if you're, I'm just, I don't, I don't know the thinking of speeding, but, if, well, except for when I speed by, but anyway. So, I think it was election day, anyway. Back to topic. I think that if you're turning onto West and you just kind of see the straight shot, it's a little bit, if the sign was kind of there within the, on the Washington Street side, it would probably be better for right now. If that's possible. Where the new parking lot's gonna go.
So between Washington and Broad, on West Street?
Yes, that would be.
Preferably facing, heading north or south?
Heading toward Broad.
I was gonna say, I think if they're waiting for Broad, people would be, they have to put the pedal to metal to get up to speed.
Well, I'm saying if I'm chugging down and I'm gonna turn right on West from Broad, I'll see that way.
So you want it headed south?
Yes.
Okay. South, headed south of West Street, between Broad and Washington, if possible?
Well, I mean, it's, it's gonna be really sensitive there, because like you can't go about 30 there, but yeah, something.
I can't speak on it, but my friend was thinking right there by the West Street, because by there, that's where. Yeah, but they put the pedal to metal, they can't do speed cameras. No, for sure, yeah, yeah. But you could put that.
So, hold on, Jack, where do you think this base off, okay, so there's a change, there's a change in the placement. So headed southbound on West Street, but from Washington to the Buckingham Lane, somewhere in between there by the lift station, if possible. So right where the back part of Buckingham is, if we could make it to the, catches southbound traffic from Washington. I don't know how the poles are situated over there in front of the residents. They're on the right side, as you're telling from more Washington poles. So if we could put one there, I think that could be.
There's a lot going on in West, so I don't wanna, you know, suggest something permanent, but something, a little reminder of something.
Just the speed board.
Does that work? Does that work? That's what we're talking about. Does that work for you? Because, I mean, that's where electric really is.
That's on the right side.
I'm glad.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, thank you.
Plus, if you put it on the first stretch, it's so close to the. Are you watching the speed board, or are you watching the stop sign?
I remember there were stop signs on West Street.
I do too. Back in the day, I remember when Upshaw was dirt. My grandparents lived there.
I'm sorry, Jack.
I'm not that old. At 98, I can tell you, at 98, it was still dirt.
Yes.
And I was eight years old. So yes, I do remember.
98, it was still dirt?
It was still dirt, and I can, that's how I can promise you. Yeah, in 1998, that was.
Actually, some of the middle street was still dirt at the end, too.
And I watched ducks land where the houses are.
That's what I'm saying.
I got some gray hair boys.
Yeah, so the, oh, there's a lot more. So the parade, the parade was, was great. What I noticed, or what we actually noticed, walking the, I wasn't the plank, walking the road, was the stormwater ditches there on Kits Branch. And I looked, I looked up, and half of them, half of them are in the town, half of them are in the county. But I was wondering, would it be possible to touch base with the county and see if in the future we can coordinate something to get that? It is really, really overgrown.
Are you talking about right there by?
So I'm throwing it out there.
Canary Village?
Yeah, yeah, right on.
That's a tax ditch, so most time they cut it once a year.
Okay.
And they will not, they will not come back, because the residents actually pay for the tax ditch association, pays for to clean that.
Well, that's the only one that they're cutting, because they're not cutting the one down by.
I'd have to call the lady from the county to ask her to.
Well, not even just the one, don't, don't, don't get that started. But they're not cutting the one, they're not cutting the one that's down a little bit further on Flower, which is in the county portion, right there by, oh, gosh. Well, let's go further, because there are two there. There are two more beyond there. The one that's down by the lift stage, or what do you call that? The dump. I call it the dump still. Yep. There's the one that's right there, and then the one that's even closer between the two, that's after the one, after the ta, after the electric company. Tim, you know the one, beyond where you have your trans, your big old transformer poles, but there's one more. Not almost all fields, but just beyond. What are you saying, Marty? There are two more. There are two more in Brown Town that are not clean. These ditches are little. There are tires in there. There are trees in there. Exactly. They're all, so where's ditch guy? Because there's still a ditch guy supposedly. Don't get, next time, we'll go back to the ditch competition.
Dean and I were saying.
That's why I said.
Or the person down to the county to see what they can do, or, but most time it's on the burden of the, it's a tax ditch, so most time it's the burden, I mean, we pay all that ditch because we have property on to that. So, and it's very minimal what we pay. So I can ask you.
Just looking, I would appreciate it.
No problem.
And then two more things here. Now, this one, next one here, I'm gonna read, so I wanna make sure I get it right. But basically, I wanted to provide a bit of an update after getting incorporated with the strategic plan and my being the stormwater guy, plus where I see things could go in the future. So this is about stormwater, obviously. Over the past five plus years, it has definitely felt like swimming against a current at times, trying to navigate the town stormwater utility, as well as the physical drainage system. But I'm committed to continue being a champion for this stormwater cause. We've indeed come a long way since 2013 with a stormwater utility ordinance and fee, but the fact is, this utility hasn't operated in the black almost every year since. In order to balance the fund, inter-fund transfers have regularly been used. Grants are certainly great, and I love grant-funded projects. However, while we wait for grant opportunities, it will still storm, and the current stormwater system needs improvements. Times change, areas are developed, responsibilities are debated at various levels, while the stormwater utility continues to tread water all along the way. There may be little we can do to change the past, but with a steadfast reservoir of support and determination, the future can be better. To that end, I ask help of this body, my elected colleagues. I believe that we need a genuine commitment to include stormwater as a town priority moving forward. Given the passage of time, and much like the other positive projects we've prioritized, Escape Park, Karen Park, Step Grade, Community Center System as examples, stormwater needs the same dedicated focus. As part of that commitment, I submit again, please, a complete review of the stormwater utility be done, from the ground up, up to and including a review of pertinent state laws, easements, ownership, exploring public-private partnerships, and the, and what the utility itself would need to ensure efficient operations, remove barriers, exclude funding, explore funding opportunities, and work towards recreating a stormwater system and or utility that Berlin deserves. It won't be overnight. Folks have heard for years we're working on it, we're hoping to get a grant, which are both true. But we as town leaders committing to making this one of our priorities says a lot to our residents, our staff, and professional partners. As well as vested and active residents eager to help, I'm here as the champion, quote unquote, the stormwater guy who has a passion. In my view, now we have an opportunity, and I'm essentially seeking group backing and or support, if you will, to proceed down this path. Essentially, I could be the champion and play Eye of the Tiger in the rain, going down Broad Street. But without some commitment and backing, I would just be drowning. Thank you for your consideration. And I went with the whole water theme there, if you noticed.
Yeah.
Reservoir of dedication. So essentially, I was kind of trying to do here a quick synopsis of what I've learned, experienced, talked to, and researched, really since 2016, when I first ran. And I just think that we are at the point now where considering stormwater, which is not sexy, which is not exciting, and nobody really, honestly, nobody really thinks about it until, until they're sweating. So I'm asking the group to, I guess, at least consider tonight, making it one of our partners.
Thank you. I think that, I will say that stormwater, I believe, is a key priority of the group. I think that where we are struggling, swimming upstream, swimming upstream, is that the fund, the fund really lacks the revenues to tackle some of the things that you've brought up. And I know that we've been able to make good stride on some of our projects, thanks to ARCA funding, thanks to grants. It does take the ability to have something to put forward in the form of a match. We've been fortunate that we have good partners that help us out. But one of the big things that we are missing is an understanding of who owns what. And we've said that time and time again up here. That if I could ask for one thing for the stormwater fund this year, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the best thing we could do is hire somebody that could tell us, this is a publicly owned ditch, this is a privately owned ditch, this is owned by the town of Berlin, this is in a, a tax ditch association. That, that would be money well spent, but we don't have it. But I think that is the number one thing. You agree? If we could get one thing this fiscal year.
I've said it for years, that we need American backing. We've said it for years, that it is one thing we need to know who owns it before we can do anything.
We can't maintain some if we don't know that we own it. We can't help somebody get a grant for it if we don't know they own it. We can't, I mean, it's just, if the ditch needs to be cut more than once, we don't know who owns it. So, I mean, I don't know how much something like that costs, if we would need to go bid for it, but it's not in this budget. And that is one thing, year after year after year after year, that we need consistent.
It's, it's, you agree, it's the starting point.
So that's interesting. So I was gonna ask what's specific, I think, uh, specific would be something like a maintenance line item in stormwater.
We don't know what to maintain.
So that's the, that's what you're saying, that we can't have a certain amount of funding for maintenance that would be how that would be created, where the money would come from, I understand. But, so you're saying that the first step in even doing anything like that is determining.
Who owns what?
An inventory.
And not just who owns what, but make it so that, we've invested in the GIS stuff. But make it so that that knowledge is not just here, you don't have to just call it down hall. We've started on the map. But the map's not interactive. You can't plug in your address and say, okay, here's this ditch, runs right behind my house or in front of my house. Who owns it? Who maintains it?
The map is very limited, unless you have the land records to go with it.
And there's gonna be a lot of deep searches that need to be done, a lot of information that's gonna need to be gone through. But that is the number one thing that we can do to move ourselves forward, because we have staff in-house that can help maintain some of this stuff. It can be part of our regular maintenance plan. But we don't know who owns what.
Do you agree that that's a key first step?
I'm gonna clarify something you just said, though. We do have staff, and they do do a lot of work on stormwater, but we don't have enough.
I agree.
There is not enough money, there's not enough equipment, there's not enough staff.
I agree, but the first thing is knowing what we own.
So staff is swimming upstream as well.
We're really leaning into this, aren't we? We're swimming upstream, we're cutting water.
So I couldn't, may I interrupt your talking?
Oh, no, I was talking, I was talking. Or really, I was talking.
Right, yes. But I said, I know we have good, we have good folks in stormwater, and they're good staff, and they're limited, and I know that they wanna do a good job. So what I'm getting at, and this is great conversation, is I think that we need, I'm asking, as the stormwaters are, for, because I don't, I'll keep going, but until we all decide, not part of it too, until we all decide how much more, because we can do a lot with our budget, we want to get this utility in the right, it's hard to change.
I think that if you're looking for actionable stuff, we do an RFP, we develop the scope of the project, we put it out to bid, figure out where the numbers come in, and we say to ourselves that if it's reasonable, that if we do either a one-time, hey, this is what it costs, we either front it with capital, which Natalie's gonna throw something at me if we use capital.
Which capital?
I know, I know. It would be in advance, I know. But, or we, or we make it a one-time fee and pay for it to get, get the information that we need.
I have one comment.
Go ahead.
Mayor, tell me if I'm wrong, the reason that you believe the most important thing is to find out who owns what, is because if the town doesn't own it, the town is not responsible to fix it. That's what our code says.
And we can't help somebody find the resources if we don't truly know who owns what. Like, if there's something, I know we talked about it with some constituents that came forward, there are ways that if you don't make enough money, if you're a senior citizen on a fixed income, there are funds available. But you gotta know who owns what.
That's true.
And, and the thing is, is that it is the number one thing that we hear regarding stormwater. It's the number one thing you've been made about. It's the number one thing I hear from this group about, and it's the number one thing I hear from Citizen Development regarding stormwater. Who owns what? Why hasn't my ditch been fixed? It's not followed right? Can't you fix it? I'm like, I don't know who owns it. It's the number one thing I hear.
The projects, the projects that have been completed, and the projects that have been achieved with over $3 million in grant money, are not specific to individual homes or commercial properties. Those projects completed to accommodate improvements of stormwater in general down in Berlin. We're not focusing our funds to fix somebody's ditch, tied residential home or particular street, but overall streams and submerged grave lands and wetlands.
And I'm not suggesting, I'm obviously not suggesting that the town do something that they're not required or legally allowed to do. But what I'm saying is, there's, in my view, a basic need for the utility to be successful anyway. So in the future, I mean, I mentioned it possibly, I don't know if we could talk about it in the future, but we're not even, we're not even there yet in some respects to do any sort of partnerships. So, I mean, yes, I mean, I agree with you and I hear you, but I'm also thinking of, not that I'm saying you are, but the individual who's A plus, who can't do anything with their ditch, perhaps. So that's, I'm thinking of this explicitly, that's why I'm asking.
And there are ways that you organize, like volunteers. But if you have a group of senior citizens that are all there, and hey, look, you can't clean your dick, you mean to tell me that in Berlin, with 5,000-plus people, we can't get some volunteers to come out there and help clean your dick? I know we can.
Right. And wouldn't that be awesome if the utility was able, in a position with the resources that we're allowed, to advertise and get that outreach and get that help? That's what I'm trying to say. The utility itself, no offense to anyone in it right now, is just set up currently almost not to be successful.
Because we as a body are not providing the tools that that department needs to be able to do their job. And first and foremost, the thing we are not providing is knowledge of who owns what. And that is our job. That's what I'm saying.
I will also, I will also offer this, and this is not gonna be a popular medium, but ditch maintenance on private property is property maintenance. If an individual's roof started to blow off, it is on them to get that fixed. It is on them to get their ditch cleaned out, if it is their property. It's not something that the town can do, or should. It, it's not dissimilar. It's property maintenance.
But to that point, we can coordinate, like, private people to, I know you're speaking from the town's perspective, but it doesn't mean the people of the community can't come together to help you.
Correct. I'm just saying the mindset needs to be understood, that it is part of property maintenance of the property that whoever owns.
I agree with that.
And I don't disagree with that. And that's part in our strategic plan. We talk about a stormwater campaign, on how to keep things clean and get that going, take care of the property. But I guess what I'm, we're getting a little, I'm talking about the utility itself. Where do we start? Let's get a, let's get a, please, a commitment to find out who owns. That's, I guess, that's the first step for everything.
It takes a.
And it.
We gotta figure out how to pay for it. Right, but I mean, the first step, if you wanted something actionable out of this evening, and what you wrote, the first step is a motion to draft an RFP and get some quotes on where we need to be. Without that, I mean, it's pie in the sky, really.
I'll make a motion to draft an RFP for stormwater ownership in the town.
Second.
And we'll get the tools to help. I know it's a lot of, I know it's a lot of.
Because we'll have to pay the A to do it, because I'll add it to the list of a half a dozen RFPs that I'm working on. They don't write themselves.
I understand that, and I know that, but it's not gonna get done. I, I understand that. And I know that. But it's not going to get done tonight or tomorrow. But that is the very first step.
I'm not pushing it. I'm not saying I would like it next week.
I'm, we'll put it, we'll put it in the queue. But that is the first step to getting this thing done.
And I am very appreciative.
So the motion on the table is there a second?
Second.
Nicole Nicholas. Councilmember Nicholas. All of the members say aye. All of those.
And it ended without a deadline.
Thank you.
But that is the very first step is moving it forward.
I know we would get the engineer to help us write it. But the ones that have more knowledge of who owns what would actually be a land surveyor. Because they have to do deed searches.
That's really what the RFP.
So the RFP, we will have to, it would probably be a land surveyor of some sort of, sort.
Woody probably has all the, all the info.
And no, and no offense, Woody, Woody Bunny probably has, but there's people that buy new homes in town. And I'm going to go to Buttercup because there was a couple of residents over there. I said, well, town owns the ditch. When they pulled their plat out, the bottom of the ditch is the property line.
Right.
So, and they were like, well, we didn't know we owned the ditch, you know. So a lot of the record is actually in their.
Title search.
Title deed search. So they, they should be able to find in their deed search. But a lot of the work, and, and this is something Woody Bunny would probably be great at. But he's trying to retire. But surveyors want to get you more information than a, than an engineering firm. Because they're the ones that have to do, you know, when we did get EA or DBF to do work, some of the stuff they do is they're doing deed searches and. You know, when we moved the waterline over on Harrison Avenue, a lot of that was done through deed searches and making sure we could run the waterline the due correct way. So we have to sit down and figure that out too.
Okay. And anything I can do to help?
I, I, I would like to pay. Help us, help us fund it, anything to get you.
We don't know. Really, that is the starting point.
Yeah, that's one of the, you know, I was out there in 2013, the stormwater utility was formed. And Dean Europe, Europe is still in the council. That was pretty controversial at the time. It was because it was created on the backs of businesses and residents through the fees. It was said back then that this was the only way to create a utility. They knew it was, it was by staff, I believe. That was going to be a fledgling fund that was only going to be as good as the grants that it received, if I remember correctly. So, you know, I, I hope that tonight does show you the way that important it is. But it's definitely disconcerting to have an RFP put out with no way to fund what the RFP could come back. But I hope that it does, from your standpoint, you know, confirm the importance of it because we all, as units, we all approve of this process. But we also have no way to fund it. And I don't know that I would support increasing stormwater fees on a monthly bill. So, but I think that that's probably a realistic assumption that at some point we would be, have to go that route.
Keep in mind, there is no revenue to support this. And if we borrow, there needs to be a plan to repay.
Yeah.
And as Jay said, it may need to be phased. I don't know. But really.
Maybe things.
The, the.
You could probably break the town up in four fodder.
Yeah.
And do whatever.
But so.
I'd just like to see how much. Uh, my last thing, thank you all, is I'm going to circle back. And this is, I'm, I'm going to try to make this short and sweet. I am a little bit passionate about this as well. Just because I'm, I'm concerned. The, the visitor center and the chamber and the beach debate folks. I, I really want to push, I would really like to still have a work session with us and in the public eye. So I'm, I understand things that might be, might be already in the works, but I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we do hold a work session regarding the visitor center. And occupants and potential future planning. To, and I'll ask it not be scheduled any later than end of July.
Before Berlin had Ivy had some statements.
I did. And I would like to, just one second. So every time, I mean, like I was at the farmer's market, I'm out in the valley, go to the grocery store, go everywhere in town. And people hit me and they're like, hey, look, I would like to do this with the visitor center. Wouldn't this be great? You want to know the one thing I tell them? Ivy's running point. Good talk to Ivy. Because we can't have a knowledgeable conversation about this. And I shared this with you as well. We can't have a knowledgeable, what's that?
I'm not arguing.
No, I'm just saying. But we can't have a knowledgeable conversation about what we want to do next without some summary of what the ideas are. So everybody is running to Ivy and giving those ideas to her. And from there, they will be compiled, like I've said in the past three meetings now. They will be compiled and then the mayor and council will have a discussion with the staff memo. These are the ideas. This is the option. This is another option. This is another option. And then we can have said meeting. But right now it's.
Well, is there, is there a, is there a date to give?
The goal is.
Go ahead, Mike.
Hello. Hello. I've already called a meeting for all interested parties and we're just deciding on a date and there's. Everyone will be at the table. We'll talk and discuss the variety of ideas. I was also at the farmer's market. And more people shouted out their wonderful ideas for them. And they're, and they're all valid ideas. They're all, they're all wonderful ideas. So what I'm going to do is we're going to have a meeting. I'm going to put all the ideas down in the staff memo, which I will. Present, provide to you all. So it's, it's in the works.
So why couldn't that be done in a work session?
It, it could be if you.
It could be, but sometimes too, I mean, this isn't any different than other things. Staff produce the report and then it comes here for a discussion. Instead of us compiling all of these ideas on the whim, it's making us have something that's a little bit more fruitful to discuss.
So then like.
I mean, you're getting the same people that are coming to you, the same people that are coming.
So why don't I just, I mean, Rodney, do you have a date for your, your meeting? For that meeting?
Not yet. We're, we're trying to, there's a lot of different schedules going on. So we're trying to decide.
So even if my motion gets a second and passes, we have until the end of July to schedule a work session to talk about the compilation. Of ideas in the work session in public, plus any other documentation.
Well, it's not going to be done in private. The candidate's laying.
Plus any other documentation.
It's going to be in public no matter what.
Any group we have. So. So you're suggesting that after I. Well, yeah, but I mean, that's.
That's the goal.
If you, if you want to have the works, if you wanted to combine this meeting that I'm trying to schedule as a work session.
I would like, I, as Jack, I would like you to have the meeting that you've already, because you're, this is your point. I'm not trying to take that away. But when you have that meeting and you did your compilation and your staff report, I just, and then we could have the work session. We have all that data, your staff report, your compilations, invite obviously the, some of the parties that have approached us before. And have that discussion with the ideas.
But, but what we need is some type of idea of, of where this list will be created and made available.
By the end of June.
So given that, I'll second Jack's motion.
Can I just add, as the staff person who's working primarily on the town hall renovations, I feel like it is incumbent upon. All of us to recall that we are planning to use the visitor center for staff. The town hall will be utilizing that building throughout the, the town hall renovations, which haven't even started yet. Are scheduled now for the end of this year and the beginning of next year. It seems premature to me that you all would get together, have, get all the ideas together, but. The future of the, of the visitor center is far out in terms of when, you know, when other nonprofits or other people who have interest in utilizing it. Could actually access it. I, I can't understand why you're all pushing to have that meeting this summer.
Well, I, I understand that. But also just doing a general Berlin visitor center search on the old Maryland Dispatch site. Yields to me questions on who has paid for what. I mean, the new roof, some of the.
What's your question? Well, we can help you with that.
Well, I mean, I have, I, I, well, I.
It came to light that the chamber, when that building was purchased, it was purchased with two grants on the town side. And then the chamber kicked in like $82,000.
That is incorrect.
That's in the document.
Natalie, have you seen an $82,000 check from the chamber?
Um, this was before Natalie.
But during Natalie's.
This was in 2011.
But the, the deeds don't reflect the chamber's ownership of that building.
No, it doesn't say their ownership. The town still retains ownership, but they have a financial interest in that building. And they were also required to put in $50,000 in donations at their.
What was the?
I, I don't, that, that's new information to me. It's, the information that I have is.
Can you produce that?
If you can, I'd love to see it.
Can you check also Natalie to see if any of those have been.
Could you please email me that summary that you just said? It would be helpful for me to search the numbers and the dates and not just when, the numbers and.
You'll have the legal back.
Okay.
And include Gaskell in that, please.
I have, I have an old file. I have many old files from the town of Berlin. I have one I recall and, and the, I haven't looked at it in quite some time, but the. Was, did the town purchase this property from a gentleman named Dennison?
Yes.
So I have a Dennison file.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I, I will, I will find that file and I will produce it.
I've got the deed and the history of ownership, at least in the last two or three years.
So let's compile all of that. And that has to be helpful information for Ivy to have in that staff report.
I have that information also. I was, what councilmember Nerd said, I had never heard that before. So I would love to see that.
I'm, I'm assuming if I have the Dennison file, there should be that information here.
But still.
I have that. And, and there was, money was provided also by the Humphreys Foundation to ensure that it, it was a visitor center.
So, well, there is a motion on the floor that I believe was.
Did you say, okay? All of the members say aye?
I'm sorry. I abstain from this conversation.
Okay. So I've got an abstention. I've got an aye, an aye.
Yes, yes.
A nine, okay. And the.
So tell me this.
I, well, I'm not fully understanding what the motion was. So I want to ask clarity. And this is the whole of work session in July?
After Ivy concludes her.
Work session during normal mayor and council hours or outside of that? Or do you want to, do you have a meeting? Like, what's the deal?
I, I believe we could probably have it like we do out of the work sessions prior to a council meeting.
But just like Sarah said. Not knowing the outcome of the renovations and what's going to be needed after those renovations. This discussion will be not for commitment of anything, but, but to hear. Possibilities of, of, of what could be. Because the time for commitment is eroded.
Thank you.
And maybe just to add, you have 12 months ahead of you. So the 12 months, there are potentially new businesses and new commitments that come across. So that meeting pretty much is just to gather information, but continue on working because we have a full year. Because we'll have to be there for four year before we return back. So 12 months is, is a good term to collect more information and get better ideas.
Just so I can clarify, I'm abstaining because my family could have a financial interest in the outcome of this decision. Due to, about commercial space.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm done.
Sure?
Yeah.
Let the mayor get his comments because I am freezing over here.
Comment.
It's hot.
I'm cold.
I'm comfortable.
I'm not.
Sarah, go ahead.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
You don't want to tell everybody that they got to get their checkbooks out, get ready for a street sign auction?
I'm, I'm not ready to.
Okay, all right, all right. We'll keep that.
Premature.
We're getting close. We're getting close.
I've been trained, fight with it. So I am in my training era.
All right. We're, we're almost there. I've talked enough this evening. I'm done. And in an effort to get councilmember Nicholas.
Thank you, Lord Jesus.
And more. Comments from the press? Nothing. Thank you for coming out to the Memorial Day. We appreciate that.
Mr. Grant?
Go ahead. Paul Davis.
Hi.
So, Mary, you got some props?